Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Kerry Robinson. I'm the CEO of Blacktown City Council. Welcome to Blacktown City Council's Budget Forum 2023. On behalf of council, I'd like to acknowledge the Darug people as the traditional custodians of the land on which Blacktown is located. I'll now hand over to Rhiannon, who will provide an opening to our forum with a welcome to country.
Warami, bodjerina junior darug norawa, which means hello, welcome. Good to see you on Darug country. I would like to acknowledge and pay my deepest respects to all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander elders, past, present, and emerging. I am Darug, born of this land, born of the spirit. We have walked this land since the dreaming. Darug clan lands embraces the land, rivers and sea, from the Blue Mountains to the ocean, from Hawkesbury in the north and down as far as Apun in the south. Our ancestors' voices are echoed in our own, as we still live in these changed but beautiful places. This land has seen the Darug people gather here for thousands of years, to hunt and feast, to sing and dance in ceremony. It is a land rich in dreaming. Ancient spirits of the earth creator live here, and we are privileged to be custodians of this heritage. Our mothers and grandmothers are our teachers. They teach us of the dreaming, our language and our culture, as their mothers before taught them. Our bodies and minds carry the seeds of their wisdom, the memories of a different past. We may not look the way our ancestors did, we may not live the way they did, but we are still here, we are still strong, and we have more than 60,000 years of culture in our blood and in our hearts. So tread softly on this ancient land, because our dream time is still happening. Our dream time is forever. Our language is an important part of maintaining our culture, as you are here today, who are passing on the old ways of our people. Now I will welcome you all with a very special welcome that has been gifted to me by my beautiful grandmother, Darug elder auntie Edna Watson, and then translate into English for you. Tiyati Mara daruga pemul, koma Maria pemul, ninglaringa vibuna, ben nayan mawaraneeng, nayidjigai, ninggami gai jaraleng, ninglaringa tiyati, ninglaringa ninggami gai. Guyu wale angara, gunagal dag gunagel, dalaloi, mugukopala ninggami. Dijulaloi nejtimi gunagel, jamia tiyati, ninglaringa iyora jamna, medigagarrang barak, nejida daruga pemul, dijurigor. This is Darug lands. It is the lands of our ancestors. Their spirits still walk among us, spirits that have been here since the dreaming. Our language and our culture have been passed down from generation to generation to continue an unbroken culture that has extended for thousands of years. In the language of our people, I welcome you to Darug lands. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rhiannon. Really, really appreciate that welcome. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, people of Blacktown City, the aim of this forum is to present in broad terms Blacktown Council's draft budget for the next 12 months and to give you some insight into council's plans for the next 20 years. Then it's over to our esteemed panel here to discuss some of the ways forward for Western Sydney. But first, let's introduce our panel, starting with our mayor, Tony Bleesdale, OAM.
Thank you, Kerry. Kerry, look, I'm really keen to share our plans, Blacktown City, for the future. But at the same time, I always say, feedback from the community is our very best planning tool. We really want to hear what we can do to help our communities as we continue to build and transform the city of Blacktown. At the same time, though, as meeting with also the challenges of tough economic times and rapid growth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To my right, we have Dominic Teakle, who is the CEO of PCYC. Alicia Talbot, the Blacktown Arts Manager of Arts and Cultural Development, housed in the Leo Kelly Blacktown Arts Centre. Alicia is also one of the Blacktown City Women of the Year for 2023. Also, Laura Farage. Laura is the Advocacy and Innovation Lead for the Hive Community Development Organisation in Mount Drewat. And on the other side here, next to the mayor, we have Bridie O'Kelly. Bridie is active in all aspects of youth advocacy in Western Sydney. That's a big space to be in, I've got to say. Bridie is also a member of council's Youth Advisory Committee. Then we have Kelly Stanford. Kelly is the Director of Kimbo Wali in Wayland. Kimbo Wali supports Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander young people and their families, helping them connect with country, culture and community. Really important work. Okay, so that's introduced the panel. Now to our budget forum. So let's have a look at council's budget plans.
Hello there. It's my privilege to present the Blacktown City Draft Budget and Operational Plan for the upcoming financial year. Council's $787 million budget shows our commitment to build, maintain and support a modern, growing and thriving city. This balanced budget and council's plans for the future ensure we can get on with the job, pay the bills and provide the best possible services to our community. We are also committed to the continued transformation of our city as we prepare to deliver a brand new set of community-transforming infrastructure projects.
Blacktown City is the biggest city by population in New South Wales. More than 415,000 people live in Blacktown City. Our population is predicted to reach 612,000 by 2041. We are committed to transforming our city through the delivery of vital new infrastructure for our residents and businesses, and providing high-quality community services and facilities. This meets our commitment to the residents and businesses of Blacktown City. We have allocated $221 million to major capital works and making sure we are getting the job done. We'll continue the transformation of the Blacktown City Centre with the further redevelopment of the Warwick Lane Precinct, which includes the expansion of the Australian Catholic University Blacktown campus into the precinct. We have unlocked the investment from the Walker Corporation in the city centre, underpinned by the Blacktown Brain and Spinal Institute. And we have guaranteed the future of this city through the 4,500 permanent jobs to be generated by this project. This economic activity in our city will unlock other opportunities for residential and other land uses in Blacktown City Centre. This year, we are officially opening the recently completed Blacktown Animal Rehoming Centre at Glen Denning. We will open the Blacktown Exercise, Sports and Technology Hub, B E S T, BEST. And with it, launch a bright future for our Blacktown International Sports Park. These are world-class facilities for the residents of our city, where they live right here in Western Sydney. In this year's budget, $63.4 million will go towards building improvements across the city. Council will provide an additional $4.4 million to upgrade facilities at council sporting grounds. We have allocated $20.9 million for road and footpath improvements across the city, with $11.3 million for new roadworks in the North West Growth Area. We have also allocated $45.6 million to the open space needs in our city. This includes the development of new open space in the Riverstone and Schofield Growth Areas. Of course, we will fund our core services, the critical council operations for your community. This budget allocates $28 million to ensure council's kids' early learning centres continue to deliver the best quality care and education across one of the biggest childcare operations in New South Wales. Our libraries have never been more important. $12 million this year will ensure our community has access to this vital function. $69 million has been allocated for the operation and management of waste collection and management services. And $24 million will go to operate Blacktown City's five aquatic and leisure centres, the Leo Kelly Blacktown Arts Centre, as well as community centres and recreational facilities. The Blacktown City Council Draft 2023/24 Budget Documents, as well as the 2023/24 Operational Plan, is available for you to have your say in council libraries or on our website, blacktown新southwales.gov.au.
Now that we've heard what's ahead for council, let's hear from our panel. And I'll start with Dominic. Dominic, there's some really big plans for the PCYC at Shelvey. Can you tell us about those and how they'll help the community in Shelvey and more broadly in Mount Drewat, especially those families that are doing it tough right now?
Yeah, thank you very much, Kerry, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's a great privilege to talk to the people of Blacktown, but also the partnership with Blacktown Council has been longstanding with PCYC, and we're very grateful for that support. We are blessed to be able to have a $25.5 million facility being built near the Shelvey site at the moment. We know that it will bring sport and recreational facilities to the young people and the community of Blacktown. And I think from our perspective, as a charity that was founded on a partnership between the police and the community, that community engagement is critical, because as a charity, we will not refuse entry to any young person. So there's always a way to engage. We don't just do sports, we do a lot of other artistic and other recreational activities. We use every bit of the space we can for community orientation, so we feel this is a real game changer for the community.
I've been out to Shelvey, and I know Dominic's absolutely right. It's jam-packed all the time. It's really, really great to see. Thanks very much, Dominic. And Alicia, can you tell us a little bit about arts in Blacktown and council's arts programme, especially at the Leo Kelly Blacktown Arts Centre?
Definitely. At Blacktown, culture and creativity are embedded in our everyday, and the council is incredibly supportive of wanting to tell a story about who we are. And culture, if you like, is as diverse as the people all throughout our city. It can be anything in your leisure and your time, and I think that our community has asked for, have let us know that 96% of our community rate arts and culture as important. They want programmes that are culturally relevant, that talk to who they are and what they do. They want to participate and contribute, and they want to hear the story of Aboriginal Blacktown told by our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community members. So the programme at the Leo Kelly Blacktown Arts Centre tries to reflect that every day. It's a low-cost daily programme where you can come to be part of an open studio, which is a group of artists and creatives who practise every week together. You can drop into our Elders in Residence Programme, which is our senior male elders telling a story, connecting to culture, and all of our community are welcome, Aboriginal and non-Aboriginal. And on Saturdays, we often have a guest workshop or a family day where you can just come and try something. And always around the venue, there's live music, arts and culture, and new exhibitions by international, national and local artists. So we're really proud of the exchange, ideas and the creative community in Blacktown.
You can see that Alicia's incredibly passionate about her patch, looking after arts in Blacktown. Thank you, Alicia. Laura, the Hive's one of the unsung heroes of the city, we say. Can you share with us some of your stories in supporting children and in the wider community, and some of the difficulties you're facing in the delivery of those services?
Thanks, Kerry. Wow, what an introduction, unsung heroes. We haven't heard that before. That's nice. So the Hive work with children, families, organisations and residents in the Mount Drewat area, and so we all have the shared goal that all children in Mount Drewat start school well. And so for us, that looks like an ecological approach. We have some one-on-one programmes with our linkers where we help families to access early education and allied health services. We have an Early Educators Network where we're really supporting the early educators. They're doing such amazing work in our area. And we also have an amazing collective of organisations working across the community and really deeply in four of the outer Mount Drewat suburbs, to really look at how can our communities and families be really supported to be such safe and nurturing places for children. And so some of the challenges that we often hear in consulting with those families is that there are so many amazing facilities and resources in particular that are available across Mount Drewat and Blacktown. We've just heard two amazing examples, but we often find that some of our families aren't able to access those due to different family challenges, due to finances. Transport is a really tough, I guess, issue in our area to if they don't have a car or able to access public transport. So we'd really love, and our community are telling us they'd love to see, some of those facilities and resources come out into the little community spaces and the hubs out in the suburbs out there, which would just be so fantastic to be able to see. Yet programmes such as arts being available for these kids who can't transport and might not be able to have those opportunities otherwise. Sporting clubs are something that we hear quite a lot and opportunities. So that some of the challenges that we're seeing is that these little suburbs are almost forgotten in sometimes these bigger projects, and so we're really excited to hopefully be able to work with council and our partners here to see how can we bring these amazing opportunities and facilities out to those smaller suburbs as well.
We very much look forward to that. That'd be very, very positive. Of course, we've got childcare centres spread all across Mount Drewat, so there's an opportunity to work perhaps together there.
Yes, very closely. They're amazing, the local kids' early learning centres.
They are great, Kel. Thank you so much. Now, turning to Bridie O'Kelly. Bridie, how can we all encourage young people to be involved in community, to be really involved? And can you touch on why it's important to improve relations with our young people? And what are the biggest challenges that are facing our community?
So I want to thank Blacktown City Council for laying a very firm foundation for what it is to engage as a young person at a local level, through the annual Youth Ambassador Programme, the Youth Forum and the Youth Week initiatives. Council has laid a very firm foundation for what it is to participate at a local level. I guess the important role of youth involvement in education, employment and entertainment is very important. Us as young people, we are the future, and as cliché as that may sound, we are the future doctors, the future teachers, future council members and members. And it's important that what is made and what is started now is forward-thinking with young people in mind. And so I think making sure that there's accessibility in terms of education, and I think we've seen that with the recently established ACU building, in addition to local talent retention, making sure that we keep local talent local and not having to trek out into the city, which is not, of course, the best or the most convenient. So yeah, making sure that young people are encouraged and supported to stay local. And yeah, I think Blacktown City Council has definitely laid that firm foundation.
Thank you very much, Bridie. And now Kelly Stanford of Kimbo Wali, a great service in Mount Drewat. Perhaps you can tell us a bit more about your role in working with and supporting the Aboriginal community and how that will grow in the future.
Thank you for inviting me here tonight, Kerry. I really appreciate that. And I also need to thank Rhiannon for her amazing welcome to country. I'd just like to acknowledge that Kimbo Wali is named in Darug language, and it means many stars, and it is meant to represent the many stars amongst our community, from our young people up to our amazing elders. Kimbo Wali was established to support our young people, to stay engaged in education and to transition into further education and employment. And just to build on what Bridie said, it is to ensure that our Aboriginal community members can benefit from this amazing investment and growth that Blacktown City Council are making in our community infrastructure and in economic opportunities. Our five focus areas in Kimbo Wali are education, careers, culture, wellbeing and community connectivity. Every single thing that I've heard from my amazing panel members here today demonstrate that we have significantly aligned goals, shared values, and we have a shared cohort of people that we are trying to work with. But what I think's really important to acknowledge is we have a huge population. It takes all of us to work together and to collaborate, and I'm really pleased to be here this evening, because I am already thinking of so many amazing opportunities for us to collaborate, to share our facilities, to cross-refer. And I think that the more that we do that, the greater the benefit we have and the more significant improvements we make on the wellbeing of our community members.
Thank you so much, Kel. Now, Mr. Mayor, we've heard some really great and obvious passion there in the people of the city delivering for the city. Can you give us some insight into your confidence that council can deliver a growing city where people are able to live, work and learn?
Well, thank you, Kerry. Look, I want to say this, I firmly believe we're on the right track. And I say that backed up by a number of key facts. Firstly, once again, council has delivered a balanced, responsible budget that builds on our history of strong financial management for our city of Blacktown. Strong financial management that delivered key services to our residents and businesses through COVID, through natural disasters and through challenging economic and political times. Council is also facing the challenges of record growth. Our population of 415,000 will climb to over 600,000 in the coming decades. One in 65 Australians call Blacktown City home. That record growth has been forced on council by governments. Recent governments have been slow in providing the necessary infrastructure, but council has continually stepped up. We've delivered the big and small projects. We've delivered the key services to support our residents and businesses. We provide Australia's best early learning centres for our kids, our libraries and art centres, set the benchmark for other councils. Council is delivering for the environment, meeting and beating our emission targets. We have the biggest rooftop solar production of any council. Energy efficient, street lights and council vehicles. We're planting thousands of trees and providing relief during heat waves. We've proved we can deliver, but it's council's plans that really excite me. A raft of transformational projects are coming in the next 10 years. Seven projects across the city, supporting our diverse communities. A new art centre, well-upgraded some of the pearls and award-winning leisure centres. New community hubs, a First Nations Community Centre and an upgrade to the PCYC at Mount Drewat. I would like to mention here that I am strong supporter of the First Nations Voice to Parliament. I believe giving First Nations people a say is a simple change which will deliver genuine practical results. Soon we'll open the Blacktown Animal Rehoming Centre at Glen Denning, known as B A R C, without doubt the best animal care centre in Australia. And shortly after that comes the $100 million Blacktown Exercise, Sports and Technology Hub, or BEST, best by name and best by nature. The very best facilities in sports, medicine, training, education, rehabilitation, and it's available to all. I'm excited about the transformation of our city centre over the coming years. It will truly become a great place where people can live, work and learn. And of course, the Australian Catholic University will expand into Warwick Lane. The development of the Health and Medical Precinct around Blacktown Hospital will bring more local jobs. The historic agreement between council and the Walker Corporation will revitalise Blacktown City Centre, thousands of jobs, residential and business opportunities, and world-class environmentally sustainable facilities that our people deserve. The planned Blacktown Brain and Spinal Institute will provide world-leading medical facilities. There's so much going on in the great city of Blacktown that it fills me full of confidence going forward. But we know that times are still very tough. Council is being responsible, providing the services and sustainable development. We still push government for a better deal for Blacktown, but things have changed. Our Deputy Premier, Prue Carr, is a resident and a great friend of council, and three of our federal MPs are members of Prime Minister Albanese's cabinet. So I'm incredibly confident in the future for our city of Blacktown. But do you know what gives me the greatest confidence? Our people, the people who work at council, the people in the thousands of businesses across the city, the thousands of students at our schools, colleges and universities, and more than 400,000 people who call Blacktown City home. Together, we're all shaping up for a great future for the city of Blacktown.
Okay, we've heard from the mayor and from our community representatives, and now we'd like to discuss some of the issues that have been raised by our residents. And thank you to everyone who submitted questions to us. We'll do our best to get to as many as we possibly can, and for those that we haven't answered, some of our staff will be in contact with you to give you advice directly. So our first question comes from Sarah, and Sarah asks, after all of the struggles our community has faced in the last few years, how can people regain their self-confidence socially? Dominic, perhaps you can start us off and give us your thoughts, and then maybe Laura and Kelly perhaps might like to chip in.
Yeah, thanks, Kerry. The key for us is COVID, if COVID taught us nothing else, it taught us the importance of community. The disconnection of young people in particular to their source of strength, their own people and talking to their own friends and family and things like that, we found that they needed a place to belong. And by providing a contemporary, modern facility, it shows investment in a community that has been disengaged and disadvantaged for some period of time. So at PCYC, we provide that sense of belonging. We provide a safe place for young people to express themselves, to do programmes for disengage, to bring schools in, to bring the community in on a weekend, to bring community in whenever the facility's not used, to feel they belong. And I think that creates a sense of community and some momentum to bring some buoyancy back.
Laura, based on your work at the Hive, what are your thoughts?
Absolutely. We'd agree a lot with what Dominic has said, and at the Hive, we have that ecological model where we really believe that, you know, children and residents, they live in community and they live in systems and families. And so we can't just focus on just programmes for a child or for a family, but we need to look at the community as well. And we really strongly believe that community spaces such as PCYC, but especially those local kind of small community hubs are real, I guess, champions of forming that social connection within communities and provide such great opportunities for residents and families to connect with one another, but also can be such great opportunities for volunteering, for employment training, for education. And so we'd love to see, I guess, more investment in those little spaces as well as facilities such as yet sporting clubs. We know how important that is, parks, playgrounds, you know, benches out in community where they can sit together and meet while their kids play. Like those little opportunities are so important and vital for creating that social connection. And as an early years organisation, we'd have to mention the importance of early education and how important we see that as being social connection for children, for being able to access high-quality, accessible, affordable education, that they can have that opportunity to meet with other children, receive that education, but also for their parents and caregivers to have some of that child free time, that they can then get the support that they need, they can engage in their community as well and engage in education or employment. That overall, we just know that if families are supported, that will reflect on the community. And if communities are supported, that will also reflect back on individuals as well.
So Kelly, Kimbo Wali delivers so many different things to the community. Can you tell us a bit more about the work of Kimbo Wali?
Sure. Kimbo Wali works very, very closely with our young people. And one of the most amazing initiatives that we were able to conduct during COVID and after COVID was what we called our Back to School Initiative. We were able to support over 2,000 young people to have access to all the resources that they needed, to feel empowered on their first day back at school. But what that gave us was the most amazing opportunity to ask those young people, what can we do for you to support you to reach your full potential? We had no better source of data and information than the young people themselves, and the overwhelming response was culture. They wanted to engage in culture. They not only wanted to engage in culture, they wanted to do it as a family. So we've created a range of programmes that support our young people and their parents and their carers and their grandparents and extended families to come and feel culturally safe and learn and engage in their culture. And just to echo what my esteemed panel members have said, if you support families to feel that they have a safe place where they belong, you will build trust, they will then share with you more about what it is that they need and enhance our opportunity to respond and to provide what they need. And so from the tiniest initiative, such as a one-day event, supporting children, we now have a year's worth of information to respond to. And that's what we focus on, is being responsive to what our community tell us they need.
Thank you so much.
Kerry, if I may, just to sort of try to join those pieces together, from my perspective, I think the overwhelming theme is that feeling of safety and belonging, but that comes from the contribution and listening to what the community need. But that comes from the contribution and listening to what the community need. And so we find that we need to respond to that by opening at midnight to 3am because that's an area of focus that the community feel that young kids have got nothing to do. So we need to provide a safe place. We can work with cultural-sensitive programmes. We can inculcate them into some of the programmes we run for disengage kids, to connect them back. And using your experience of that connection too, where young people, very young people are disconnected, the mothers coming to a gymnastics class can then actually have a mother's group and have coffee at the same time while their kids are off their hands is sometimes just a respite that they need to build that resilience and come back. That's what these community facilities bring, I feel.
Dominic, that's a really, really good intro into the next question. Thank you so much. And that question comes from Caroline and it's for Alicia. And on the back of that exploration of how culture works and how art can help, Alicia, you told us earlier, there's a lot of money available for a brand-new Leo Kelly Blacktown Arts Centre in Blacktown CBD, I believe. Can you tell us more about that?
Yes, it's really exciting. And again, amongst a range of facilities that occur in Blacktown City, there's been a funding programme supported by Western Vest that has made $40 million, almost $40 million contributed to building a brand-new arts and cultural centre or a brand-new Leo Kelly Blacktown Arts Centre. And I guess what's exciting about that is that we can't meet our community need. Like, we have 50% unmet demand. We can't meet the amount of artists practising in Blacktown professionally. We can't meet the demand for free workshops and programmes or low cost. And we can't meet the amount of live music and storytelling that our community have to say about themselves, to themselves and to the world. And so a new facility will actually help broker more inclusive space, physically accessible space and space hopefully more in the heart of the city so that all our community can go there and engage in a wonderful, creative and inclusive space.
And Alicia, will that be bigger than the existing art centre?
Yes, Kerry, it will be bigger. I mean, you know, as everyone knows, I will always say it could be even bigger. But yes, we've been lucky enough to build almost double the footprint of the building that we currently have. But most importantly for us is transporting the feeling that the building has and our community created, but creating accessible infrastructure for so many of our community who can't access a range of facilities.
And that's right here in Blacktown CBD in Main Street?
Right here in Blacktown CBD in Main Street.
Thank you so much. Now, Bridie, what are your ideas on ways that youth can be more involved in Western Sydney? And why do you believe that that's so important?
I think I want to start off by saying that the notion that young people are apathetic towards local issues is a very outdated way of thinking. And so young people, they are tremendously engaged in issues that pertain and affect them. I think the outpouring of support for mental health campaigns and climate rallies is a testament to that passion. But of course, it's about tapping into the ways in which young people respond to wanting to participate. And I think that's demonstrated through active civic participation when they're in their community. And of course, I think elements of culture and art definitely tie into those two. Youth-run events, I think when you're hearing matters bespoke about by people who you can relate to, whether that be in age or culture, I think that's the most effective way to get and really pull in young people and their intention. So youth-run events and also events like sport. I think sport is such a great platform to talk about advocacy. It's something which I think everyone can relate to. Everyone roots for a sporting team or plays. So I think tapping into all of these social events that are already that are already active in our community is the most effective and productive way of going about that. So yeah, I'd have to say those reasons.
Thank you so much. And with so many sports clubs in Blacktown, more than 118 playing fields, we work with those clubs all the time to engage youth as best we can. So thank you for that insight. Much appreciated. And now for something completely different. Mr. Mayor, many of the questions that we have received ask us, when are our residents going to get a green waste bin?
Well, Kerry, thank you for the question. First of all, let me assure you, our residents, that a green bin is on the way. Our current two-bin system, of course, has worked very effectively for many, many years. Our team, though, at this time, has been very busy organising implementation of food, organics and garden organics, or green bins for our residents. It is a real issue that our community wants to participate in. Of course, the government wants all councils to have this bin serviced by 2030. But we are committed, no matter what, to implementing the service within the next two years. There's no doubt, five years ahead of the state government target. So Kerry, we're very confident that we'll be able to deal with this issue. Again, seeking to ensure that our environmental obligations within Blacktown City are met. And of course, creating a city that we can be very proud of in terms of dealing with waste and waste disposal. So the future's looking good for the green bin, let me tell you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And of course, we have all of our red bin waste is composted right now.
Yes.
So all of that waste is being composted. So thanks, everyone, for your thoughts, your experience and your insights into the way you're helping our community grow and helping our people live within the city. Again, thank you to everyone who submitted questions for our panel. Council officers will attempt to make contact with those who missed out on an answer tonight. We've heard council's plans. We've heard a wide range of opinions and ideas for our growing city. In conclusion, Mayor Bleesdale, what have you learnt from tonight?
Well, thank you, Kerry. Look, I think it's been absolutely very, very valuable for myself as the mayor of the city. And of course, listening to the debate and the speakers tonight really leads me to the view that Blacktown City is in good hands. It really is. The feedback has been very, very valuable for all of us. I believe, of course, I'll be advocating for our residents to work with the new state government in particular, our three federal new MPs. And of course, they will be sitting at the Cabinet Table, we hope, in Macquarie Street or in Canberra. In conclusion, I'd like to, of course, thank everybody for the participation tonight. It's been extremely valuable for us, for myself as the mayor. I also, of course, want to thank you all, in particular yourself, Kerry, for taking part in tonight's discussions. It's been very, very exciting. I'm excited. The future's looking good, let me tell you.